Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see you here tonight. We are going to, I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda because Cheryl has an ordinance that she wants to put in there.
Oh, no.
Make a motion to amend the agenda.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
You have the minutes of the September 17th regular council meeting. And the September 20th special council meeting minutes in the packet. I would like you to just pass one at a time.
I move we approve the 17th minutes. Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Upstate.
Baker.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
And then the special council meeting on September 20th.
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
And you have the bills in your packet. Called payment listing at the top. And I think Cheryl is prepared to answer any questions you may have about them.
What's the one to Eric Sterheim for $1,100?
That's his yearly dumping fee, first of all, stuff I do.
Which is leaves and brush chips.
Chips.
Okay.
Stuff with a lot.
I asked about the first federal credit card and 571 was the cable TV for something he purchased. Evidently, Bill. Dirt Dog Boring and Trenching was High Street, something on High Street count?
Yes.
And Borderlands, something that's down the drive.
Yes.
And that's the total?
Yep.
Ferguson Water Works.
What's precision cutting?
The ones that are doing the concrete.
Of town.
Hey, if nobody's got anything, well, fight bills.
I'll second.
Go ahead.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yep.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Next thing you have in, on the agenda is Mr. Rick Rossifer from SMTA. You have the podium.
Hello. I have a special presentation for the council tonight. We had 10 signs made for the certified gig community. And I'm presenting one of the signs. I will drop the rest off to Cat later. But this is actually one of the signs that you can place anywhere in the community to show that it is certified gigabit.
Great.
By our company. So we're the only company in Hicksville, Ohio that is certified to provide gigabits. So we had to put our logo, certify, certification, and the town name. So Tribune did a great job on them. So.
That's great. That's great. Thank you so much.
Yes, I will pick these up tomorrow to administrator, drop them off. And there's 10 of them in there. The holes will need to be drilled on however you want to mount them and, or whatever you want to do with them. There is a few other signs I'll drop off too. It's your choice whether you put those up or not. They're basically advertisement signs for us. Other than that, our project is complete as of last Friday. So we're done. We're just trying to sign up as many as we can.
Do you know how many you have signed up yet?
Seventy-one. Not enough. Not enough at all. Our target is 125 behind right now.
Ah.
We understand we had a slow start, things like that, but our budgeted right now was almost 200. And so we're, we're playing it by ear, just seeing how it is. We understand people are under contract. Afraid of a new company coming in, you know, things like that. We expect it, but we think it'll pick up, you know, so.
It's great service. You know, I've signed up great service.
Yeah.
So what channel is Hicks TV going to be on?
Well, as soon as Bill and I sit down and have a conversation.
Okay, I didn't know if you knew yet.
No. We have to see where I can fit it in the lineup, but I found the equipment. And I've got to get a certain person to bury fiber into the high school. And then work with Bill and we will get it on the air. But I think I can do this all for less than $3,000. So this is my cost. I'm paying for it. And this is what I'll take to provide Hicks TV owner service.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks, girl. That's all I have.
Well, we're glad you're here.
Thanks.
I think they don't want to use the show, the sign cameras.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Going on to boards and commissions, the zoning board of appeals met September 19th. There was an application for a sign variance by Hershberger Fine Foods and Turnover Creations at 304 Wendell Avenue. And the board voted in favor of approving the sign setback. And then we go on to the park board meeting. And the highlight that I want to point out in the minutes is that, a quote from the park board minutes, "There are no parking signs in the park for a reason. We expect patrons to follow these announcements. Will be made during the homecoming game. The enforcement of the no parking signs will begin October 5th. People parking illegally will be ticketed." Just in case you didn't know that. You can pass a message on, okay? So then we go on to the police, fire, and EMS committee. Anybody want to say anything about that?
Oh, yeah, I can, on last Thursday, we had a meeting before a special meeting with Chief Kramer, and we talked about filling a couple, few spots. Their current EMTs full-time will put in a lot of hours. I mean, they're getting overburdened with a lot of hours. And so recommending you having another full-time, kind of taking the chief's silk cost position. We had to fill that one yet and get a couple of part-time positions added. And we did some interviews and at the last meeting, we not, or I guess you made the recommendation to hire Abby Shock as full-time and Drew Work part-time and Kara Burak as part-time pending certification. And that was pretty much the extent of it. We also talked about having a pay rate schedule for the new ordinance, and that's what was added to the packet tonight.
I have something, ma'am. It's my fault. I have not got a street lighting property committee put together. John Hart has spoke with me repeatedly regarding he thinks he needs his 15-minute parking back. The night he called me was when the motorcycle get-together was at Bandit's. I left my house, drove, went down past Conley's, came uptown this way and parked in front of his place. But he, and he came out and said that, that, you know, it just opened up. Well, there's several to park in. But I told him that I would bring it to council. And I told him that we would put it, we'd go to committee first. And like I say, my fault. I did not get a committee meeting together. This is probably the best way anyhow. He wants 15-minute parking back. How do you people feel?
Didn't we already discuss this and vote it down? And then didn't he take it to have the people in town to vote on it and it got turned down?
Yes, sir.
Why are we beating a dead horse? I mean.
I told him I would bring it up. I'm doing what I said.
I think you've already addressed it multiple times. My, my thought, he took to the voters of Hicksville to vote on it and it got turned down then, too.
Anybody else?
Why did we take it out to begin with?
It wasn't getting, uh.
Leased.
Yep. And that's what Ron and I talked about this that night. And I said, it didn't work the first time. Because John was, he was upset because people were parking there and going to the Uber for hour, hour and a half. So it wasn't getting enforced, bottom line.
There's no doubt in my mind that from uncertain, I mean, that night he called me, big party down here, big party at the Uber, but like I say, I parked, I parked in front of it.
And he did. I seen it.
Yes.
I agree with Eric, you know, that we voted it down, the voters, and that's huge. The voters voted.
Yes, yes.
What time of night did you go by? Was it in the six, seven?
This was probably 6:30, 7:00.
Yep.
I had came up and parked and was standing out front talking with John when Sheila came by and, and after we concluded our conversation with John, then me and Sheila went and walked the sidewalks and looked at the saw cuttings and. But like I say, I told the man I would bring it up. I do what I say. I may not have done it as fast as John wanted, but, and I apologize for that. But, and I agree with everybody else. So if full council agrees that it's a dead horse, let's not ever talk about it again. That's what we'll do. Thank you, ma'am.
We have minutes in the packet from the finance committee. Do you want to make any comments?
Very well self-explanatory. Got any questions on? Thanks to Cheryl because I really wasn't sure about the 20% and why, and now I understand. So when we do the budget.
And thanks to Cheryl for getting, letting all the departments know that ahead of time what their number is to make, keep things under.
So unless somebody else has any questions. We'll be doing the budgeting probably in the next couple of weeks, I'm guessing. So I'll get with the committee, give you a copy, the committee, and then look them over and then we'll meet. And the committees did, like the police and fire did look at their budget, so there's no surprises. So I don't think anybody else did. I said last year that would happen, so it did. That's all I got.
Are there any other committees of council that would like to report on anything?
Water sewer committee is meeting Wednesday at 3:00. I'll look over the three options for Chicago Avenue that we got to turn into the EPA for our full plan, to get that moved into phase two. So we'll meet with the engineer on that. We've got three options to look at. Can you get 3 o'clock this Wednesday?
And the cemetery will be meeting on the 9th at 4:30 in the city hall.
You heard from Nagel? They coming?
Possibly the week of the 22nd.
Thank you, everyone, for your committee reports. We will now go on to the administrative department.
Nothing. Unless we have a question?
Any more questions?
Waterline going well?
It's done.
Done, but it's, I mean, everything's great.
If they got.
They are paid.
They don't, they don't, they've got the base code in. They don't, they still got a couple inches to fill, but other than that, it's.
Hoping they be out of town by tomorrow afternoon. But subject to weather tomorrow.
Is, is that new or newer where you tied on? I never knew how much of the street was getting done, and then I wrote it the other day.
We went from Westwood back.
Right.
Because that's where we've had most of the breaks, so you could get it done. From Westwood towards High Street, they're really on the record of anything bad, so.
What about the alley on Cheese Factory where it's been blocked off? Are they planning on finishing? Are we allowed to leave that blocked off like that? Doesn't that have to be taken care of?
Did you inherit anything on that?
Window, window.
I know they had been talked to, but it might have.
Who blocked the alley off behind the cheese place?
The, the delivery drivers.
On the other.
Pretty early in the morning, they do their milk run and that's, they were blocking that alley off quite a bit.
Well.
No, no.
Cheese box is not the one.
The next one over.
Their ladder. They had that car block in it for a long time, and I know they were pulling the boot down.
The one with the verdigris tile?
Yeah.
That's been, what, a month now?
Yeah.
And I don't, legally, you can't do that, can you? Shut her down.
They don't have their lateral fixed, which I had no idea. Have you, I don't know.
They supposedly were given permission from, what they told me was Jimmy Garner. I haven't had a chance to talk to, to him yet about what was going on. But my understanding was they were going to have it blocked off for about two days, which clearly it's been a lot longer than that, but.
Well, we had told them, yeah, they could work in the alley because that's where their tap has gone into the main. But I'm not talking to anybody for a while. I'll find out tomorrow. Try to find out what their plan is. They were going to hand dig it, which.
Ambitious fellow.
But no, I'll find out what's going on.
Any other questions for Cat? Okay. If not, we will go on to the solicitor's report.
All right, let's have two things. First is Resolution 2018-24, first reading by caption only, a resolution, a resolution opposing state issue one. And then ordinance 2018-12, first reading by caption only, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees and declaring an emergency. I guess the caption of that should actually be just EMS employees because it's not all the village employees. This is, if anybody's got questions, this is what Cheryl added to the agenda to address the issues from the PFB.
You want it passed as an emergency? I move we suspend the rule.
Roll call, please.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Then second, third readings of ordinance 2018-12 by caption only, and ordinance establishing pay ranges for village employees and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Ridgeway.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody have any questions for Troy? For Troy, anything you need to update us on? Okay. So we'll go on to the department heads. I will take this opportunity to announce that I received the resignation of Police Chief Kirk Stickney on September 25th. And he wanted to thank you for the opportunity to have served this community. And we think, we thank Kirk for his service of serving as our police chief for almost a couple of years. So. And with that said, then I believe that we have patrol sergeant doctor here tonight. If you want to report anything, I guess we will allow you to speak from your chair instead of walking to the podium.
Yeah, okay. I did have some notes, but my doctor's appointment went significantly longer than what I expected today, so I didn't get a chance to run and grab them. But the one thing we wanted to bring up was maybe bringing back the ride-along program. I kind of looked into it. We're one of the few departments that do not do the ride-along program around here. I did discover that there was some issues, weren't really issues, there was concerns back in 2015 from our insurance. And a lot of that had to do with our waiver and the policy that we had as far as that goes. So I kind of looked up some of the other departments and how they do it and their waivers and stuff. And I was wanting to speak with, give it to you and let you look it over. Obviously, we do, the village would take on just a little bit extra liability with us having a, a ride-along. So to me, that's something you guys would have, would want to approve or not. The other thing was, we were going, we got the new patrol car. Everything seems to be going pretty well with that. We're going to keep it black. And we're going to change the design a little bit, keep it kind of simpler, with just police in Hicksville on the side without any kind of fancy design. I'd be happy to show anybody that, what that, how that looks. I believe you guys had seen it before. And the other thing was, we, Officer Bostick, myself, and a couple other guys, we worked pretty hard the last week or so, and we made kind of a master junk vehicle list in town. And Officer Bostick has been going around all day today, really, trying to work out which ones are junk vehicles. And we were going to do something on our Facebook page, something else as far as trying to educate people and defining what a junk vehicle actually is. We're going to go off of that. That's about all I got, really.
Maybe you should share that with the village website also, so that Don can get that information on our website. I had a complaint about some vehicles this afternoon. When I called the police department, I got Patrolman Bostick and I told him where the problem was. And so. So.
Again, we're hearing about, we're going to do something. We've been hearing about that for years.
A lot of that for years. Yeah, we're, we're doing stuff.
Good.
And I apologize. I was going to speak to our, our insurance company, Conrad Becker Liability Company, and ask him, talk to them about the ride-along program, but it slipped my mind, so I did not call him about that last week. I don't know if you had any reason to talk to him or not, so. So what are you thinking about that program? Who do you think's going to ride along?
Well, before, we had quite a few, like the high school would do a job shadowing deal, and we would, we would have high school seniors ride with us sometimes. And then we would have cadets at the academy would come ride with us from time to time. The one thing, and now the email that I have from the insurance company is from 2015, so it's a little dated, but the one recommended, the one recommendation they had was to limit the number of hours that people would do a ride-along. I know we had, we've had to turn people down in the past because they wanted to ride along all the time. But there's also, Defiance College has this new program with criminal justice where there internships. And we've actually had one girl come to us and express interest in being an intern. And we didn't really know how we could get her to fit in as far as internship and all that. We kind of wanted to discuss that with, with some people, figure out exactly how that would work. That would definitely be somebody to do the ride-along. And then we'd be more than happy for anybody to come ride along with us. We're not trying to hide anything, you know. Anybody's more than welcome to come ride along if they really want to, you know, but.
The officers have expressed to me that they would love it for council to ride along with them. And I think that's great. I think you should.
Absolutely.
Sheila wants to.
I'm growing them enough.
I, I definitely encourage everyone, everyone absolutely to ride along. We'd like to get the dispatchers and defy, some, we, we kind of make the joke that we kind of feel like we're on a little island out here as far as law enforcement goes. So we'd love to have the dispatchers and, and, you know, council and people come ride with us.
The sheriff's department has offered their services in backing up our police department whenever they need to. As usual, they always do. But, and I've encouraged them to get the part-time officers on the schedule. And it looks like you're going to have a little time off now, so.
Well, I, I was actually contacted by two part-timers today and then expressed that they would really like to come work. And they, they seemed excited about coming and working one now, so.
So what's next? You're going to post the chief's job?
Cheryl has begun posting the open position. And do you remember the date that you put as the ending date for accepting resignation? Or I mean, applications?
20th.
Resume is the 20th? Okay. So the 20th, in thinking that then the police and fire committee do interviewing within that next week and we could make a recommendation for the November council meeting, the first meeting in November. So if you guys have any other thoughts about that, let me know.
I would, to end of this meeting, I would like an executive session for personnel.
All right.
Oh, also, we've had several people ask for trick-or-treating. I don't know how it's been decided yet, times and all that kind of stuff.
We just, someone asked me about that right before the council meeting, and we thought that October 27th is a Saturday night, that we would do it that night. And I don't know. We've done five to seven for quite a long time, but does anybody think they'd like it 4:30 to 6:30?
What did you last year? You wanted, you made a recommendation to have it earlier and so it was daylight out when they got done. Yeah? Was it you?
I remember the discussion, but I, but I don't know if anybody really has any thoughts on that or not. Is the fire hall going to have anything going on?
Yes, we'll have the, the.
What time does yours start?
I think six, five or six.
If we did that, they could go from trick-or-treat to.
To carnival.
I don't know. What time is, the church has trunk-or-treat? I'm sure they get a lot of business out there, too.
I haven't heard anybody's time.
Daylight out. I'm sure it is.
Well, why don't we do four to six and then, and as you say, they can go to the fire department afterwards.
Sounds like a plan.
Four to six.
The very last thing I have is some of the officers had asked me to challenge the fire department and open council to the 5K race. Anybody on the. Participate.
Real easy for him to say.
Yeah. It's not really hurt.
It's fake.
We'll challenge him. We'll challenge him.
Officer Bostick is wanting to, to challenge any of you guys to a race at the 5K. So we may be able to work something out.
All right. Make it more fun. We'll have to get some TV coverage for that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you say council, too? Right. Anybody here? Eric, can you be fast? Yeah.
I'm going to do the one that's.
I'm left-handed.
Starts at the.
You're doing the .08.
Yeah, the .0K one, the donut.
Donut and the beer. Yeah.
Pushing it.
Yeah. Anything else? Anybody else have any questions for the sergeant? Or do you have any questions for us? Thanks for coming.
Next time.
Hope you heal quickly. I think that's a slow process, unfortunately. All right, we have fire chief.
I sent a letter on the desk tonight before the meeting started, just some things happening and going on. The, there's a letter in your packet for the Dr. Frank Fosse, MSS, excellent award. We were not nominated alone in that. It was a joint effort with Antwerp. It was Antwerp's accident that we mutual aid with them on. The extrication took over an hour. And as you see in the letter, they had an amputation, amputation team on the way because they thought that was what they was going to have to do is cut the guy's leg off to get him out of there. Through both departments, they just kept working at it and working at it and finally got him freed.
Good job.
Yep. Good job.
Saturday is a big day for the department. We've got a breakfast that starts at 7:00 AM. The 5K run starts at 8:00 and open house at 11:00. Something for everybody to do.
Sound good.
Any questions for me? Any questions for me? Abby's fitting in well. She's picking up on things real quick on a computer. Good choice there. Drew's worked a couple weekends. He's helped out quite a bit. And I'm not sure on the status of the new girl. I haven't had a chance to talk to her. She made it over and got everything.
So I don't know what kind of car this is you got from?
It's an '04 Suburban.
Old Ford Suburban?
Right, '04.
Oh, okay.
You want to put it in service?
We're using it now. Association plated it and paying the insurance and everything.
It's nice. Do you, sorry, have your name on the side?
Yeah, it says New York at the bottom, but it still says Hicksville.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Cap.
Thanks, Cap.
And then we'll go on to, did you have any EMS report? Were you?
Just with Abby and.
Okay, all righty. And park director Val Shaw, do you have anything to report to us? Okay. How did the parking go at Homecoming? I mean, I know that's where the announcement was made and everything, but.
As far as I know, I mean, we, somebody walked back to the home, they didn't see it. We get it all, we'll throw up on that one.
Any questions for Val? We will go on to the fiscal officer's report.
I'm still experimenting with your reports, so you have a fund status report and a cash status report that the mayor likes because it shows everything, unfortunately. It's kind of big. You have your September income tax and utility collections report. And I also put in a letter from the OML, a member alert about State Issue One that we voted on today, or we didn't vote today. Any questions?
So I'm happy to see that our income tax collections are okay. They're not, you know, negative or anything, so that's good. In fact, I guess they're good. They look good. Does anybody have any questions for Cheryl about any of these reports? Okay, then we will go to the mayor's report. And one thing, I have commodities on that list because over the years, the village has passed out commodities to people on the second Thursday. And I think we're at, what, 45 people that we serve, Kent?
About 45 families, yeah.
Forty-five families, okay. And food is also given out at Christ's Cupboard. Food is given away by Lifeline Connect Church every Thursday. How many families do you think you do?
Every Thursday, we're at least 30 to 40 families.
Okay.
Just every week.
And then the senior citizens also have commodities through the senior center. So a lot of times, it seems like it was kind of an inconvenience for Kent to get commodities on those Thursdays. And so I was wondering if it was really necessary for the village to go pick up commodities on that Thursday when the service is available for other, for, from other places in town. And so I guess I just wanted to know your thoughts on that. I, I think, and I guess maybe, Steve, you might have something to add to it also, I don't know, since you distribute food also, but.
Well, sure, I guess, you know, there's, we do it every week and there's different places in our, in our community. And we certainly don't want to recreate the wheel. However, there's probably, Kent, I bet if you came down, you'd see a lot of the same families. But however, we have four food distributors in our community. Seems, seems like a lot. I wish we could combine them a little bit more, but that's not always possible either.
So do you guys have any problems with discontinuing the village's food giveaway the second Thursday of every month?
How many years have we been doing it, Kent?
Four, 35 at least.
There's something I hadn't heard, did we back?
When I first started in 83, we were doing it.
And you go to Toledo to get it, right? And what kind of commodities do you bring back?
Depending what they have that month. We don't give them a set.
Is there a lot of leftovers?
No. My Teletia tried to get everything out of here because I don't want to be a grocery store.
And I agree with you, mayor, I think.
We, at one time, we were getting commodities for 60, 70, but.
Yeah, the numbers are dwindling.
Yeah, so, you know, I just think that there's other opportunities for them to, to get commodities in town.
If we quit it, can you start up again?
I don't know how that would work. I'd have to ask them.
What program is it that we belong to to get the commodities? I mean, is it a state-funded program or?
Yeah, it's never cost us anything other than, you know, time and gas to go up and get it. I don't know how the village ever got connected with Seagate Food Bank.
Well, maybe we get input from the people, you know, wait a couple weeks and if it's very negative, then maybe.
Kent did have the idea, I mean, at the, by this conversation, we're at least telling people that it's being discussed and I guess they can, give them an opportunity to speak to any of you if they want to about it, so.
Do we look at maybe seeing if anybody else would be interested in getting those commodities or putting it in their program?
That's what I was thinking. If we continue to get them and then let somebody else disperse.
Well, I've got to fill out a report every month. I don't, I don't think that would work because I don't know how I would report what we were doing with our.
That we're just handing it over to somebody else?
Yeah, I, I, I don't think that would work on their end. On the food banks, yeah. And I thought regardless, well, not regardless, if we would decide to do away with it, I'd at least do it through the end of this year, like just people a couple months heads up. But if we decide to keep it, we'll keep going and getting it.
Why don't we do that? Say, okay, we're gonna quit, but we're gonna run till the end of the year. And then if there's a lot of comments, heartache and other comments before the end of the year, then we just keep doing it. Would make a cold hard decision.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's a good idea, Ron.
Good, all righty. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Hicksville Eagles and the Rotary for the donations that they made to the Gator for the beautification committee. Some of you might have seen it already, but it has a 75-gallon tank on the back of it. And it is just wonderful to get to the farther areas of town to water without chugging along with our little garden tractor. But we're still using it, too, because it's got a pretty nice setup. And I'm still using it anyway in the downtown flower beds just because it's, you know, I just haven't switched over to the Gator. But we're gonna continue using it for now, I guess, but.
Couple of things with that. Have you ever gotten paperwork on that? Okay, so we still have it paid for. Kind of keep waiting for that since you happen to be here. Will that need plates? Okay, well, that's why I keep waiting for the paperwork so I can.
But thank you very much to the Eagles and to the Rotary for helping with that. That was just wonderful.
You're welcome to use it anytime you want.
Yeah, there you are.
It's nice, it's fast.
I'm gonna use it for the 5K run.
Yeah.
You're gonna hose people down? Let's see here. So we have an announcement here that Lifeline Connect Church on Sunday, October 7th, from 2:00 to 4:00, is going to have hay rides, candy, pumpkins, and face painting. Everything's free, food and refreshments. Lifeline Connect Church is on Defiance Avenue. And pony rides, bounce house. So I've been down there for this and it's fun.
What's the hours on that day?
The hours are 2:00 to 4:00, Sunday, October 7th. It is a lot of fun. And then, of course, this weekend, we have the Hoptoberfest. And I just thought maybe we needed a little update because originally, Two Banisters asked for this end of town to be closed off just for the motorcycle show from maybe Willpower Fitness. But Kent has to block off the far end of the street to keep the semis from getting down in town and then they can't get turned around and leave. So Kent and I talked about maybe leaving a width of a car there so cars can get into the businesses in the, in the downtown district and be able to either go out the bank driveway or the Huber driveway. And yet try to, and yet hopefully the semis will not try to get in there. So I'm just telling everybody that because, you know, the businesses should, still should be able to get their customers there. And this is a community event. Other vendors are welcome to come in and, you know, I mean, downtown businesses can take out food, the restaurants, the pizza places, they're all welcome to set up on the sidewalk and sell their food outside. So again, I'll just tell you that, that's Saturday, October 6th, there's gonna be a polka band from 1:00 to 5:00 outside. And then the wannabes are gonna play from 6:00 to 10:00 inside. And then there's the point zero eight K motorcycle show, weather permitting, superheroes. The fire department breakfast is going on in their 5K. And also, the, the proceeds are going to, the proceeds from the motorcycle show, I think it is, are going to the beautification committee and Helping Hands of Hicksville. So that's nice. And I just passing on the message that I heard that a communications officer is needed at the 911 Center in Defiance. The starting pace $15 an hour plus benefits. And so if anybody thinks they have the calm personality to answer 911 calls and you're looking for a job, might be a good one. So what have I forgot, everybody? Zane, you're in the back. Did you want to talk about anything?
I'm just here to listen.
All right. Thanks for coming. How about anybody else in the audience? Bob, do you have anything?
No.
Thank you, Sergeant Doctor, for leading our department right now in keeping our schedule going. And I think our officers are, all know what their jobs are and, and are gonna do them just fine till we get this situation taken care of. And thank you for that.
You're safe.
Does anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Ron, one of you, executive?
I move we go into executive session for personnel.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please. Ridgeway.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yep.
Beverly.
Yeah.
Barth. If anybody wants to wait out front, you're welcome to hang around and see if we can back.